All right, I'm gonna go and open the meeting. Welcome everybody to the December 21st 2020 City Council Meeting. We are here in our finest holiday clothes and ready to declare that there is a quorum present. Madam Secretary, a quorum is present?
Yes.
All right, can move into item B, invocation and pledge of allegiance by council member Mayor Pro Tem Bobby Warren.
And if you will each join me in prayer. Lord, God of all creation, we give you thanks and praise for your presence and action in the world. As we come together this evening as a community, grant each of us the wisdom to understand your will and the work we do and the decisions made here tonight. Help us to advance the common good of all in our city. Bless the families in our community, particularly those who have suffered as a result of this pandemic. We pray for all medical professionals and ask that you watch over them as they care for those who are ill. Heavenly Father, send your Holy Spirit down upon all of our first responders and our troops, particularly those serving overseas. Protect all who serve this great nation. We pray that each returns safely to their families. And we pray for the repose of the souls of all of those who gave their lives to protect us. During the season of Advent, as we prepare to celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, may we all know the peace of his presence in our lives. Praise and glory be yours, O Lord, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
And if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Bobby. Move on to item C, citizen comments. Citizens who have sent a card in which to speak to the city council can be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda. The city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only to statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to city council. I have one person signed to speak, I believe, and that is Mr. Malloy, Mark Malloy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member of the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens comments for the 1221 2020 City Council Meeting. Please make my verbal comments said during this meeting and documents that I will give to the city secretary a permanent record of their, this meeting. I'm speaking tonight to the mayor, city council, and city manager, asking some questions and talking about issues that impact property owners within the city. I have requested and gotten the results of the parks, you know, the city's Parks Master Plan, citizen survey, and the number of respondents came to a total of 464. This number represents less than 6% of the total population. I have requested and gotten the results of the city's comprehensive plan update, citizen survey, and the number of responses came to a total of 154. This number represents less than 2% of the total population. I'm asking the question about proposed trail connections along the White Oak Bayou. In the city's 2016 comprehensive plan in section four, it says, develop neighborhood pedestrian connections through a trail system. Acquire secure land needed for initial pass of a trail system. Utilize existing bayous and conveyance channels to help expand the trail system. The current comprehensive plan update committee is recommending removing the sentence, acquire secure land needed for initial pass of trail system, and add bulletin point referencing partnership with Harris County Flood Control on goal three, section four. The citizens that have homes, properties that back up to the White Oak Bayou and conveyance channels within the city have property ownership to the center of the White Oak Bayou and the conveyance channels. The cities does not have the ability to use the private property along the White Oak Bayou or the conveyance channels to build trails. The county through their easement access for flood control drainage does not have the ability to build trails on property that is not owned by the county without the property owner's consent. The comprehensive plan update committee in section four is saying, remove proposed trails from figure 4.6 that are unlikely. I have presented, given a document with addresses and signatures of property owners that do not want a trail built on their property. Why is the city government trying to continue pursuing the trail system? The city does not own the property and the property owners do not want the trails alongside or behind their homes. I am also asking for an explanation of why a small group of citizens through a city survey should have any say in the consideration of asking the city government to try and build trails on privately owned property that is owned by other Jersey Village citizens. So that's about all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, gonna move on to, I don't have any other citizens sign up to speak. Lori, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm gonna move on to the city manager report. Austin, will you brief us on the city manager report?
Hey, councilors, we have the, the report in front of you tonight. One thing I do want to point out is our December Employee of the Month. Maria Thorne has our employee of the month this month. She started with us back in 2016 as the utility accounting clerk. Recently promoted to the administrative secretary for Parks and Recreation in October. She's done a lot of great things for both departments in her short time that she's been there. Onboarded the new person in the utility accounting clerk and trained her very effectively and efficiently as well. Maria has dedicated a lot of additional time to make sure that both roles were completed while there was a vacancy there also. And I have to give Maria props. In her previous role as utility billing clerk, she was the one that really led the, the charge to get the e-bills going. She made a lot of great improvements there. She's always looking at ways we can do process improvement and improve a lot of things and she's very great at that. Very thankful for what she's done and for the city and very excited for her to be in this new role. Then I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have on the rest of the city managers, city managers report.
Congratulations, Maria. And I've run into her a few times walking around City Hall and, and she does a fantastic job. And I've heard great things that she's done over the past, past few years. So congratulations. Any council members have any questions for Austin or any city staff?
Austin, just a quick, and Scott may need to chime on this just very briefly, and this is kind of an awkward sort of placement of this question. Because technically it has, it relates back to something on the consent agenda, but also Mr. Malloy's question. I assume that, that even if we just approve the consent agenda as a whole, I, I can still, that's enough notice for me to refer to something that's related to that, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I raise it in the city managers' report is because I, I wanted to ask that first, but I think maybe the managers' report may have updates on the activities of committees and whatnot. I just, for some reason, couldn't find the exact place, but my understanding, Austin, is that when referring to trails in Harris County Flood Control District, you know, as far as a partnership with them, if I understand correctly, not all of the Harris County Flood Control District easement or land along the bayou that could be used for trails, not all of it runs alongside residential property. Is that correct?
Right. The E127 from Rio Grande over to 290, and I believe on the other side of the United towards Jones, that's flood control owned. And then there would be the E200 project. I believe the flood control owns that as well. I'd have to look at, at that one again, but I believe they own that one.
Okay. And so that, that's generally what we're looking at when, or that's what the comprehensive plan update committee is looking at when they're making those changes, correct?
Yeah, that's certainly going to be the most easiest, easiest way. As we've talked with, I know I've talked with the comp plan update. I think Robert's talked with the Parks Committee as well. If we were going to try and put trails on other pieces of the bayous, we would have to go back and purchase easements. So that would be a
Yeah, as I heard Mr. Malloy read the policy, it was pretty generic about partnering with Harris County Flood Control District. It didn't say you were necessarily going to use it. My experience is that the Harris County Flood Control District ownership adjacent to different creek segments varies a lot. Although sometimes the adjacent property owner may have an ownership interest to the center of the creek, sometimes they do not. It depends on how the Harris County Flood Control District acquired that particular property. So it's going to basically be a parcel by parcel determination of what the rights of the flood control district are and what they could convey or partner with the city to do.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Austin or city staff? All right, we're gonna move along to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a council member would like to see moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, I am looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move, we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Motion was by Gary Wobenhorst and the second was by James Singleton. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So moving to regular session, item F1, consider resolution number 2020-65 appointing members to serve as directors on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board for the city of Jersey Village Tax Implement Reinvestment Zone Number Two. Lori has your name on it?
Yes, Mayor. The terms for, for the TERS board positions three, four, five, and seven are going to expire on December 31. And also position six is vacant. I did reach out to the incumbents in positions three, four, five, and seven. That's Carrie Davis, position three, Sean Anger, position four, James McDonald for five, and Judy Tidwell for seven, and they are interested in reappointment. Position six, as I mentioned, is vacant and that term will end on December, the, the December of 2021. Was previously filled by, let's see, was filled by Robert Ottman.
Yeah.
And he's no longer lives in the city. There are two applicants, Ashley Hart and Charles A. Butler III, who are interested in appointment. And this item is to consider those appointments.
All right, great. Thank you. Any council members, hopefully you've looked over the applications for the vacant position, position six. We have Ashley Hart and Charles A. Butler III. Any, any questions, comments, discussion on, on the applicants? And if not, I'm looking for a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, I just wanted to mention about Ashley. I happened to talk to her and she's a member of the Comprehensive Plan Committee ad hoc and been impressed with her interaction and activity. And she's, she's approached me with her interest on, on the, being on this committee.
I agree. I've, I've known Ashley for a little while. I know that her and her husband own some property pretty close to the city, some commercial property. So somebody with that experience and also already involved with, with, with various parts of the city would, it'd be a great, great addition to this, to this board. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm looking for a recommendation and then a motion on the slate of candidates.
I'll go ahead and move to, if, if that's what we, it looks like, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to that we add Ashley as position six, Ashley Hart to position six of the tax, tax increment reinvestment zone board.
All right, looking for a second?
If I may, I think since there's a resolution, do we need to actually have the, the motion be to adopt the resolution with those filled in?
We could, we could do to approve resolution 2065, appointing the incumbents and to their respective positions and Ashley Hart into vacant position six.
Just say so moved.
That would be my motion then.
All right, motion, that motion has been made. I need a second.
I would gladly second that one.
All right, Bobby's got the second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Those candidate slates are always tricky. All right, moving on to item two, consider ordinance number 2020 S28, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Jersey Villas by amending chapter 14, Building and Development, Article One in general, section 14-5 definitions, providing a separability clause, providing for repeal, providing for penalty, providing for an effective date. Harry Ward, Public Works Director.
Yeah. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. I thought maybe it would be valuable to provide a very quick preface to set the stage for this discussion. The first comment I would make is that each of the following ordinance modifications that's on the agenda, that is 2020-61 through 2020-64, all these are on the agenda. They look like separate topics. And they are broken into separate topics to match our ordinance categories. The aggregate of all of them relates to adopting Atlas 14. So we just had to break them up. It looks more complicated than it probably is. I just wanted to point that out. In case you didn't know, Atlas 14 is a nationwide project that's now hitting Texas and Jersey Village, Harris County. Harris County contacted the city manager in July on, and asked how was Jay, Jersey Village going to address the Atlas 14 matter? Austin and I then met. He, he requested that we propose modifications on adopting Atlas 14 specifically at Jersey Village. Although several of us participated in the development of it, I really want to give the bulk of the credit of this work to Christian Summers for doggedly integrating the Atlas 14 language into our ordinances and the I codes, building codes, existing plumbing codes, et cetera, et cetera. Harris County told me that no other municipality in Harris County had gone to that trouble. So I've just got to point out the immense amount of work that Christian has put into this. On May 19th, 2020, Harris County Commissioners Court recommended that all cities within Harris County and those entities outside Harris County that drain to Harris County must adopt five minimum standards in their drainage regulations and it has to be done prior to the end of this year. It, I guess in doing this, that would allow us to comply with Harris County's rules and we would be able to continue participating in partnership projects with the county. At the moment, Jersey Village has a grant opportunity with Harris County for one and a half million dollars and that's for the imminent E127 bayou cleanup and refinement. So we do have some things at stake here. At the time when Hurricane Harvey hit, I happened to be the manager of Harris County's Design Department. It rapidly became clear to us that we had to get more serious about flood mitigation. Hundreds of calls were coming in. As you know, lawsuits will levy and all sorts of things. Shortly after we recovered from Harvey, Harris County laid down some new design rules. And as engineers, we were threatened with the loss of license if we allowed any 100-year floodplain designs to pass through. We were even told at that time that no grandfathering was allowed either. So if we had previously approved any 100-year floodplain references, they had to be pulled back or again, our license was threatened. So bottom line, we adopted Atlas 14 almost immediately within Harris County and all the work that me and my department put out was eligible for the Atlas 14 compliance. I guess in July, Harris County was ordered to check with the surrounding municipalities for compliance and how they were going to achieve it. And that's when Austin received the call from John Steiber. After we got involved, public works, that is, we engaged with Harris County and they contracted EHRA, a large engineering firm that we've worked with before, to work with us on the changes to help guide us through them as it's a fairly hefty document. We have, we have done that. We have, we have done it until the level that no other municipality has done. At the end of it, when we thought we were done, we sent them to Harris County because they wanted to review them before city council sought. Just in case, maybe we missed something. They have now approved it, sorry, reviewed it and they have approved it. We now meet all minimum measures of the county standards according to John Steiber at Harris County if this is approved. Just a very quick summary, you're gonna see a lot of information or you've already seen it, but a quick summary of what will change is the following. Our rainfall increases from 13 inches to 16 inches in a 24-hour period. We were designing a 13. From now on, we have to design to 16 inches of rain in 24 hours. The 100-year floodplain is dead. No references to it exist anymore. We can't use it. Everything is now tied to the 0.2% AEP or 500-year floodplain. No net fill is allowed in 500-year floodplain zones. We moved to a two-year storm for designing roads, gutters, and inlets. It used to be three years. We're recommending that it go to two-year. Minimum detention rates were also increased 10%. Engineering talk, no hydrograph timing can be used anymore. You actually have to use detention. And lastly, the required finished floor elevation minimum of new habitable structures have to be established at or want approved to the 500-year floodplain elevation. So this is a culmination of our work to achieve compliance. We're recommending approval if council sees fit. This was approved by the BB OAA last week. And I guess at this point, we'd like to open the floor to the council mayor for any questions that may have arisen through your review.
Thank you, Harry. Any council members have any questions for Harry or Christian? Just, I know Greg, I thought I saw you talking there.
Yeah. So Harry and Christian, the, the, the standards that, that are updated are the minimum required to meet Harris County standards? Is there anything that goes in excess of the minimum?
Nothing whatsoever.
I'm sorry?
Nothing whatsoever.
Okay. Does it? Okay, that's, I don't have any other questions.
Just so that we can, just so we fully understand, I know we've talked about sort of the why and we've talked about the flood elevations. Can we talk a little bit about as a practical matter, like the homeowner that is going to pull a permit? People who are not in the 100-year floodplain but are in the 500-year floodplain. If I read everything correctly, they're now going to be subject to the restrictions that people who were in the 100-year floodplain previously were in terms of if they're if the surface of their living area, so use a very non-technical, just commonly understood sort of phrasing there. If their living space, the floor of that is below the base flood elevation or whatever the term is being used now for the 500-year flood event. And, and if they are going to do renovations within a 12-month period that constitute 50% or more of the value of the home, they're now going to have to elevate that living space above, I'm sorry, if I read correctly, 36 inches above the 500-year floodplain, is that correct? Depending, obviously there are some variations, but
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of options there and I, it may shortcut it. I would just suggest it. It might be a good idea, maybe a bad idea, but we have five graphics that show the rules. Christian, would you like to pop those up? It may answer a lot of questions before they come up.
Yeah, I can do that.
We used to have
I'm sorry.
Yeah, as a preface, we used to have a convoluted table. We had formulas in there for calculating various hydraulics. What Christian has done is boiled that table down. Now that's the Harris County table originally and ours. They have a very extensive table that includes not only riverine but coastal flooding and things like that. Christian adopted only the ones that are pertinent to our, our city here. And, and so the idea is that the table was reduced to only five conditions. And we have graphics to back up that table. So if you don't want to look at a table, we just have five pictures that basically show the whole story. And that's what I was going to ask Christian to show up if it makes sense to you all.
If you want a screen share, Austin, or I can just invite the council members to visit pages, PDFs, um, 294 through 298.
It looks like if you have the traditional packet, when I was going through this earlier, I saw that there's the little Red House drawings.
Right, sir. Yes, sir.
Yep, that was exactly it.
Okay, so this explains, this is, this explains the elevator, I say it now. Okay, so it's on the, on the floodway and critical facilities, zone AE, et cetera. Got it?
Right, so I thought it would answer Councilman Warren's question. Because it's five conditions and these cover all five.
So to clarify, Councilman Warren's question and the answer for him, it's floodway and critical facility whose finished floor elevations have to be 36 inches above base flood. In the 100-year and the 500-year shaded, it's 24 inches. Or if that's below the 500-year elevation, it's the 500-year elevation. I have modified it though. I still do reference in section 14333, we still do reference the 100-year. The county and EHRA were trying to strike that, but I wanted to ensure that we maintained the right to have some net fill in the, in the 500-year shaded, that being slab on grade. So we're still allowing for slab on grade, not requiring pier and beam. In regards to the 50% rule, it still applies to the 100-year. Not 500-year shaded is my understanding.
So looking at the, looking at the floodway graphic, you have, you have just in your, in your example, the five-year base flood elevation, the example has it at 102. And so the design flood elevation, the, the base has to be three feet above that. So somebody who has a structure in the floodway is going to need to be three feet above the 500-year.
You probably cannot have a structure in the floodway.
Right, but if somebody has a structure in the floodway and they're doing a renovation, are they allowed to even do renovation?
They are allowed to do a renovation. If they had an addition, they would get, need to get a certificate of no rise authorized by flood control and Harris County Engineering Department. But actually the responsibility of the engineer of record. And they're gonna have to be 36 inches above, so it might be that their addition will be higher than their present structure. But if they cross the 50% threshold in any given 365-day period, then the entire structure would have to be treated as if a new structure in regard to these ordinances. But that's always been the case.
I think practically, if we're looking at this, so I'm looking at the zone AE right now, which is the 100-year, 100-year floodplain. That happens to be the floodplain that my home that I'm sitting in right now is in. And it looks like that one, your example, has that one two feet above the 500-year base flood elevation. So previously it was 18 inches above the 100-year. Now it's looking like it's two feet above the 500-year. Is that?
It's, it's two feet above base flood elevation.
The 500-year, but
The 500 Or, or the, or the 500-year, whichever is more stringent.
Okay.
So people who are in this zone, if there may be some homes that previously would not have to elevate if they did substantial renovations that now will, because you're talking about a difference of several, at least it looks like, at least in this example, the difference of instead of going up 18 inches, they're going up, let's say they're at, let's say they're just below the 100-year floodplain. In this example, instead of going up 18 inches, they would now be going up four, yeah, four feet?
Four feet.
No, we actually previously had a rule that in the floodway, not for critical facilities, but in the floodway at the lowest supporting horizontal structural element itself had to be above, which puts you at about 36 inches. So this will not be more restrictive for the floodway.
From, I'm looking at the 100-year, the, the zone AE.
Okay, zone AE, okay.
So when you're saying the lowest, and I apologize, I didn't quite catch the phrase, the lowest supporting structural element? So you're talking about the bottom of the slab? So you're talking about the bottom of the slab in the case of a slab foundation?
The, the bottom of a pier and beam foundation. The lowest supporting structural horizontal element we, we require, we're striking it, had to itself be above the design flood elevation similar to the coastal V or A zone. We're just going with Harris County's thirty-six inches because it, that rule used to put me at about thirty-five and a half, so there's no material difference.
Do we have many pier and beam foundations in Jersey Village?
Everything in the hundred year and the floodway is pier and beam. Going forward or, is what it has been. Only.
When you say what it has been, you mean anything, any new construction?
It's, it's, yeah, it's been this way since two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just, we're just, the, the numbers are increasing for, uh, by six inches minimum for AE and X shaded.
So if someone had, let, let's say someone does have a slab in zone AE. Because I assume that there are some of those still. Do they follow this?
Most.
Yeah, okay. Do they follow this particular rule?
If they were to add on, yes.
Okay, so, and I assume that the.
Maybe have to have a few steps up into their addition to their master bedroom or more than a few.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just trying to, I, I realize that this, we're talking about pier and beam here, but I, I'm, I'm kind of trying to look for the, the the most common circumstance here. You know, what is going to be the most common situation within this zone? And it sounds like you're talking about a slab, slab. You're talking about slab foundation being elevated. I don't know what the typical thicknesses of a slab for, say, a one-story home, but.
Typically, four or five inches, but that would, that would apply to a home elevation.
Okay, so they, they still are, we're still looking at them having to elevate their home a good deal more than they did before. I mean, I guess.
The, the, the finished floor of the addition. So, for example, like when, when we, we were looking at our, our garage and, you know, a lot of people build out their garage, they finish it out. They don't park their cars in them. So we were looking at our home, our slab is in the hundred year flood, flood plane. Um, and years ago, I asked the question about what, what, what would I have to finish, put my finished floors at? And essentially, it was eighteen inches above base blood elevation. So that would have put our garage, we'd have to put our finished floor at base blood elevation and then eighteen inches. So looking at, if it happened to my house, we would have to essentially put steps up by two feet into a finished floor. So we ultimately decided not, not to do that. We, we would, it would just look a little odd in our house.
And then if you did do that, then, then you wouldn't have the head clearance.
Exactly, yeah. And, and I would bunk my head even more than I do on all the things around my house. So this is, this is looking like if, if for some reason I wanted to do that now, it would be base flood elevation plus four feet from what it was before.
Two feet.
Well, previously, previously, the base elevation was hundred year. Right?
That's, that's one way of phrasing it, but, um.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was based off the hundred year, but, um.
So now we're, we're doing two things. We're, we're switching essentially the, the base blood elevation from hundred year to five hundred year. And we're adding an additional six inches to the, to the elevation requirement. So for.
Adding, we're adding additional six inches in relation to the one hundred year.
Right.
Which is where, where base flood was figured out. So I like the language of just going from eighteen inches to twenty-four inches above base flood, which is essentially what it is. Unless the five hundred year is a little more restricted, that that might be twenty-five inches or twenty-six inches, but for the most part, they mesh.
Okay. And, and.
Oh, so, so in many places, the five hundred year flood plane is not that much higher than the one hundred year flood plane?
Right.
Okay.
That is correct. In fact, in some places, I think you will still, the two, the two feet over the one hundred will be still higher than the five hundred year.
Okay.
Okay, okay. That, that, I guess I was just trying to get a sense of what the practical impact's going to be. How many people are out there that, you know, previously, if they thought they were going to do a major renovation of their home, are now going, i- i- now it's going to be significantly more costly to do so because they then have to elevate. It sounds to me like it's not going to make a, a huge difference. At least the, the, the redefinition of the base flood elevation may not. Um, certainly, certainly you're looking at a slightly higher requirement in terms of how, how far above the base flood elevation they have to be.
This could adversely affect many in the five hundred year shaded though, on the cusp of AE or the one hundred year, uh, whereby previously, they may have had a finished floor that was nineteen inches above base flood, so they were allowed to do that addition to the back of the family room and keep the same floor level. In this case, we would have a problem. They would have a step up.
Do, do we have an idea as to how many properties are in that situation? I know that's a complicated question, but.
I'm gonna hazard a guess to say about eighty.
Okay, out of about a little over two thousand, single-family, are, are, are we talking about just single-family residences?
Yeah, I'm thinking of, yeah, I'm thinking of people, folks who are on the east side of Senate, say, to use Acapulco and Juneau and Lakeview and Congo, uh, not so much Congo, but who are round halfway down the block between Jersey Drive and Senate.
Yeah, that's pretty accurate, because I'm, I'm, yeah, my, my house is like one of the last ones on Acapulco in the hundred year. And then the gray shaded goes maybe two and a half houses down.
Right, so I, on Acapulco alone, I can see maybe ten houses that might be affected. Juneau, maybe eight. Lakeview four with a Lakeview address. So, um, uh, some on Coldwin, some on Leeds, couple on Ashburton.
So probably less than five percent of the homes in Jersey Village.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. I, I, I just want to make sure when we're making this decision, like obviously, there's a lot at stake here because we're talking about the opportunity to continue to do property, continue to do projects with the county. Uh, I would imagine that, that the, uh, the E one twenty-seven uh, project may not be the last. Uh, and so, uh, I, I think in this situation, because the, the potential impact to individual homeowners is relatively small in terms of the, the entire community. And then the potential for projects to do a, a significant good for the community, particularly the E one twenty-seven project. You know, I, I know a lot of people don't like the idea of additional requirements and having to go even further, but it is in the interest of making sure that they get out of the flood plain. Now that we know that these events seem to be happening more often, heavy rains are he- even heavier, uh, which I think is the whole point of the Atlas fourteen project, is recalibrating our entire assumption about how much rain falls, uh, and how often. So, yeah, I, I think this is something we have to do. And unfortunately, there's gonna be some homeowners out there who are gonna get a, and I don't know if there's any way for us to, to really reach out and kind of communicate to people in a way, because this is one of those subjects that I think is probably the most misunderstood by homeowners. They kind of know that there's a requirement out there, but they don't know exactly when it applies. And just if, if there's a way that we can kind of communicate this in a way that's easy to understand for the average homeowner, uh, so that they're not suddenly shocked when they've put together this great plan for a renovation and then it's put halted in its tracks by government red tape. I think that'll help, help ease the transition.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, where it's, it's a the requirements come from upon high, but it's incumbent upon us to actually implement it and regulate it and, um, yeah, as you mentioned, there's gonna be many more projects down the road. Uh, and the goal of all of this is to hopefully take a lot of those homes that we're mentioning out of the flood plain. So if we're able to improve the E one twenty-seven, if we're, if we're able to, to do future projects, uh, to improve stormwater capacity in Jersey Village, I mean, you know, detention ponds, whatever we come up with, whatever future councils come up with, we have to do this in order to make those possible. And then hopefully that it will help hurt people like, like myself and my neighbors, a couple houses down, get out of, get out of the floodway completely, get out of the floodplain completely. So.
Now, now, Austin, does this now, I, I think someone mentioned earlier that if a, if a home is in the floodway, which is very different, that's that, the land right next to the bayou typically. It, does that now mean, for example, uh, elevations are, would no longer be an option because that work would be prohibited within the floodway?
No, I don't believe that would prohibit any, any elevation. Um, it would just mean they're gonna be a little bit higher than, than they would have been under the old standards.
Yeah, okay. I just, for some reason, I thought something was mentioned about if a home was in the floodway, then they couldn't do anything.
I don't think this changes that at all.
Okay.
If, if a home is, if you cannot build a structure in the regulatory floodway that causes a rise upstream. So the, the constructing something in the regulatory floodway is already very difficult. It, if, it would definitely have to be some type of paired structure, uh, and you'd have to show that it doesn't cause a backup of water.
I think, I think, speaking of practical, as we mentioned earlier, practical if, if these homes, for example, if they're in the floodway a- and we identify them as needing elevations and they need to go a little bit higher, that probably lowers their BCE, uh, in your application, right? Going higher is more expensive, therefore it may have an adverse impact on that number.
No, once, once, there's really only two price points for elevations. It's below four feet and above four feet. So if you're going, you know, four and a half feet or eight feet, there's really not any price impact.
All right.
I, there, there's more than that. If you go twelve feet or, or great, greatly higher, but in Jersey Village, we aren't facing that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? I know there was, uh, several, um, ordinance, ordinances in a row, and, and I know we, we kind of went over all of them ta- packaged together, so what I'd like to do is just, if anyone has any questions on all of these items, we can, we can bring them forth to our staff members now. Um, I know they gave us a summary of everything, but, uh, you know, just from what I wrote down, from what I read earlier and what I, what I took from your summary, um, I think I've got all my questions out of the way. Does anyone else have any other questions?
No, I think y'all pretty much did. The only point I wanted to drive home is that we can't really change much of this. Um, this is federal saying, I was doing some reading on it and, I mean, it was data collected in twenty seventeen, published twenty eighteen, enforced twenty nineteen, and now it's finally, well, we have to deal with it. Flood mitigation takes time and, uh, there's not a whole lot we can do to change any of this, this. We have to follow if we want to continue, um, getting flood insurance, if we want to continue doing projects with flood control. We don't really have a whole lot of options here. So, uh, there was some good things I noticed when reading about it is, uh, it allowed for some other ways to mitigate. Um, we already talked about pier and beam, and so it's not all doom and gloom, you're gonna raise your house higher. There's some other ways that make it more economically feasible to build, so it's not all bad.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? And, um, if not, what I want to do is go ahead and get a, uh, we'll, we'll go through these, uh, see it's item two, three, four and five seem to be all packaged together. So we'll do them, we'll do them one by one. I'll read them off. I'm just looking for a motion in a second and we'll vote on each of them. So I'm looking for a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-eight.
I move we approve ordinance to twenty twenty dash twenty-eight.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? Item number three, consider ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine. Looking for a motion on ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extension or any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? Move on to item number four, consider ordinance number twenty twenty dash three zero. Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve our twenty twenty dash three zero.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? And item number five, ordinance, consider ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty-one, looking for a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-one.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? All right, going to item number six, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-six, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tyler Technologies New World Public Safety for the purchase and implementation of a software system for use by the police and fire department. Uh, let's see, we have Chief Riggs and Chief Bits.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think I'm gonna go ahead and start tonight. Uh, Chief Riggs, you good with that?
He's muted.
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right. Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, tonight, Chief Riggs and I are bringing forward an agenda item that we believe to be a critical move to the future of both our departments as we move forward to better our departments. This agenda item tonight is to request the city manager into, into another contract with Tyler Technologies to implement a new CAD system for police and fire. The city currently has Tyler Technologies for financing court. Uh, I believe, uh, they're signing the payroll system Executime. Austin can confirm that, I think. Chief Riggs and I have met with Tyler Technology New World Public Safety Group on their current fire and police reporting systems and their CAD system for dispatching emergency units to emergency calls. For over twenty years, the city of Jersey Village has been with Crimes CAD, which was developed by Sam Muesen State University. There's under fifty agencies to our understanding that have Crimes CAD in Texas, and Jersey Village is one of them. Crimes is a law enforcement tool designed for law enforcement. However, the functionality of the system for them is antiquated. Chief Riggs will speak to the law enforcement side of it here in a moment. First, I would like to discuss the fire side of this, which in the state of Texas, Jersey Village is the only city in Texas that works with fire, uh, with the crimes system. This is only because when SciFair Fire Department changed their CAD to TRITech twelve years ago, TRITech wanted over a million dollars for us to, to use the same CAD as they were getting. At that time, that was not an option for Jersey Village. So we spoke with Crimes and Crimes indicated they would create a fire module for us. So however, we're just an extension of the law enforcement, like a little division of them. We're not separated in the system. What I mean by that is when police and fire are the, on the same call, they see our information and we can see their information. The fire service should not see calls and information sent out for police-related calls. This is a major issue when it relates to CGS information. We should only see what is relevant to fire and EMS. Second, the information that we would like to get sent to our reporting system, which is Firehouse, is minimal. We get basically address and times. Uh, and most of the time, the times are inaccurate. Third, the system will not send any information to our EMS module, which is a separate software program because Crimes doesn't have an agreement with them. When three o'clock in the morning, when our volunteers or our, our staff are doing an EMS call, when none of that information transfers over to a reporting system, that's more time at three AM that they're having to put into the system. So staff, including our volunteers, have to spend that extra time doing that. The New World Software and CAD from Tyler Technologies would come with a brand-new software program for fire department, which will work together with the CAD to insert all the information obtained that, that the dispatch is put into the system. And their system will send all the information to our EMS reporting system because they do have an agreement with our EMS system. The New World Program also offers mobile inspections, which we don't have now, and plan review, which in turn will allow divisions such as police, court and code enforcement to gain critical information during on-scene calls or even during plan review, or when we have an issue with a business. Currently, the Fire Marshal's Office does not have a key critical program that speaks to our CAD or fire. Currently, the Fire Marshal's Office does not have a key critical program that speaks to our CAD or fire reporting system. We basically have created an online forum to use on an iPad. And that information doesn't get sent into the fire reporting system. Uh eventually, the system, if we were to get this, will be used to send critical information to all fire units. Through either an iPad or a computer in future, it will allow us to signal and route on scene and service. Have GPS locations, be able to download uh critical uh Google Earth information. Things like that, as far as dispatch, the system is Windows based. Uh where Crimes is not, currently for our dispatchers, they have to multiple uh, they have multiple screens, they have to open. And have to bounce back and forth between them. Tyler Technologies New World will allow for dispatcher to have one screen open. And with a click of a button, information is available to them on one screen and only that screen. No switches to change computers, no having to change and wait for seconds for another screen or a form to pop up. It's critical time used for them. To meet the crimes, uh to me, the crime system is inadequate and does not have the depth needed for fire dispatching. Dispatchers cannot utilize the EMD EFD software program that we've actually purchased for years now. Because Crimes does not have an agreement with that company. And the company has developed that, that's the company called Priority Dispatch that developed. The questions that we ask people that call nine one one to send the right units to the right organization. Even though we have built a response platform in that CAD, which tells which unit should be sent to the emergency. The system on occasion dispatches wrong units. What I mean by that is if we want an engine to go, it might send the rescue truck, or if we need two engines, it's sending uh a Tahoe or an engine. Uh at the same time, instead of those two engines. For me, New World CAD adds a CAD built for fire service, it adds premier fire reporting system. That works for the fire service, service, adds a module for fire inspections and plan review, also. Allows for the rest of the city, such as court, building department, to be able to see businesses, contacts, plan reviews and more. Tyler Technology CAD is all over the country and has been proven leader in the fire and police computer computer aided dispatch. And fire and police reporting software, they meet all Enfer's reporting, Tlet's reporting, CGIS requirements. And I formally am requesting for us to make this critical transfer to this system. Now Chief Riggs, it's your turn.
Alright, thanks Chief, uh I also uh just to add a little bit on the CAD side, as he says, you have to keep going to different uh. Uh screens like the AVL to see where the units are at, they have to go to a different screen, this would have it up on the screen. When the uh dispatchers take a call, they can look up and see where the closest uh police unit is to respond to that call. Um that's just one piece on the CAD, on the law enforcement side, one of the things that um. I was asked this when I first came, along with some other things, the radio system that we reprogrammed was the CAD system and about the. Uh RMS and report writing, obviously, uh at the time, um Crimes was a uh, we don't get cost. Uh that's why we used them for twenty years, but as we grow and as police work gets more challenging and more data is requested. This is a critical piece that will assist us in getting good information. Uh the, just an example on my end, when I came here, I had to totally redo. The uh report that I give to y'all, because the data wasn't being pulled correctly. And we're getting the, it's the best we can do is what I can say, so it is antiquated. Um Grapevine PD just left Crimes and went to Tyler Technologies. Uh because of that very reason that we're talking about today. I was unaware of the fire side until me and the fire chief started talking about it, and I said, wow, you know, that's, that's not what we need for you. And also, we had some issues on our end, uh we upgraded, uh Crimes upgraded just about three, four months ago. Our ticket writing went to almost fifteen to twenty minutes just to issue a citation. As you know, just being stopped, they're not real happy, and to take fifteen or twenty minutes on the side of the road, it's just not, it's not efficient. It causes issues, then if you, I find out on the other side, if an officer goes out and takes a report. I'm sure everybody here has done an email, a nice email, probably, you know, several, a lengthy email, then you lose it. You don't feel too good about having to recreate that. Fifty percent of the time that our officers enter data into an offense, they lose the narrative. Not to mention, when they write a ticket, they don't have a master name database. That it transfer that information back in, so they got a double key. Um. That's some of the issues that we have on the uh. Um. On the patrol side, uh you know, just saving time. Then we go into CID, we can't even assign cases electronically. Um manage the features. Uh crime scene photos, there's just so many things, this system is so robust. That it's definitely gonna help us be more efficient, we're gonna be able to save time on our employees. Uh that, you know, just to pull the report, there's sometimes Deb could take three, four hours to get what I need. You can do a query, you can do an ad hoc report that will spit it out in minutes. So those are just some things that will help us do our job when we efficiently save the employees frustration. And I just, like the chief said, I think this is an important piece that we add, on the uh. Evidence side, currently, it doesn't even have a management program, Crimes, they have to use two different, she has to go in and use. Uh two different systems, Crimes and then File on Q, so she has to enter it one system, then enter it the other. And a- as uh the chief and I are just explaining to y'all, this would be a great uh piece to make us more efficient. Uh provide a better customer service to the citizens of Jersey Village and those that ask for data. So as the chief mentioned, I uh also want to agree with him that we're recommending that council consider uh purchasing this software for us. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, any questions, comments from council?
Oh my gosh, we're still on Crimes, I didn't realize this, um so. Absolutely, I would love to get on something that's not Crimes. Um that is, that should have been done years ago at the city. Um, having personally used it, having worked in different dispatch centers. And understanding the CAD and in all their day to day life. These two are right on, we need to replace this system. My only questions are gonna resolve, revolve around, is New World the right product? Um. So first off, will this replace File on Q also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um. I don't know a whole lot of people that use New World. Um. Did y'all? What other products did you look at and compare? You know, I, it sounds like this one does a better job of all the others that I've seen in merging. A whole city, when I looked at New World, it did a much better job of merging the different needs of the fire department and police department. Because they're very, very different um end users. And their CAD is is almost completely different in the way that things get dispatched and dealt with. And then records management, and so what else did we look at other than New World?
Councilman Singleton, uh chief, I'll sort, I guess I'll take this one, I was fortunate enough to utilize this software for the past. Uh fourteen years when I was with uh Rockwall. They had this system when I went there, um at the time, we actually, the sheriff's department. Was wanting to look at, we were looking at a a different system to maybe bring them on board. Um because uh they weren't at the time, it's called New World at the time, not Tyler Technologies. They were purchased by Tyler, I think, back in two thousand sixteen, we looked at Southern, we looked at several other at that time. And the best product for us to stay with uh New World. That was a an upgrade we're getting ready to do, which is gonna be about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars at the time. And obviously, there's some sticker shock there, but the company was so willing to keep us as a client. That they allowed uh us to like do a payout, because we're already paying a certain amount for maintenance, they just added. You know, an additional eighty, hundred thousand dollars, so we get to pay it out in five years. Uh sort of like a lease kind of, at least to buy, so I was fortunate enough to go ahead and work with this product for the last fourteen years. Uh we had an in-house IT person, along with another IT person that I actually sent this to. Uh just to look over what we have, John Bader is his name, he came from uh Round Rock, but. It is a system to where it makes it much easier to do dispatch, I mean, the dispatchers love it. Uh they, they, it's, it's just one of those things that uh, we showed it to our, our, our cat, our uh. Uh dispatchers and they just went, wow, they were just amazed by the time that they'd be saving just on dispatching fire and police calls. So I was uh fortunate enough to work with this product for the last four years and know several other people. Uh in the company, so that was one of the reasons that we did look at it, and the other reason is we already are a customer. We have finance, we have court, encode, when we go to Brazos, the ticket writers. They're already purchased, uh Tyler's already uh has them also, uh they purchased their company. So we basically just download the ticket riders now, you'd walk up, you'd scan it. Populates everything, download it, goes straight into our court system, currently that doesn't uh work quite like that. The officers need to have to come in and then put it in the system to court, they gotta come in. So that, that, that's uh, did we look at anything else? Uh no, sir, we have not, but that, you know, if that's something that y'all would like us to do, um you know, definitely we would do that. But this is definitely one of the best products out there for police and fire.
Okay. Um. Traditionally, yeah, I would like to look at what the other options are, though, but looking at the prices that are quoted here. Um, TRITech's gonna be more than this, uh Central Square came out with a fantastic new product, but I. It's not gonna integrate within code or the court system in the way that this will. Um.
And that's the beauty, that's the beauty of the integration, you don't have, and I know that some of you've already dealt with other. Uh software companies, when you start doing interfaces, when something goes wrong, they wanna point fingers at each other like it's on you. Here, it's turnkey, everything we have, it's one company. So that's the other benefit, yes, uh and and they're expensive, like the chief said, a million dollars to go with SciFair. Uh software's not cheap and we know that, and we definitely know that this is a quite a big ticket item. But moving forward, the way we are and the way, you know, this is just going, like, like you say, Councilman Singleton, you're surprised we're still using it. Um it 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 is something that's very antiquated and people are moving away from it.
TRITech now is over a million, TRITech now is over a million, that, that was twelve years ago, a million.
I I believe that, yeah, their stuff's very expensive, um. You know, for the price and the fact that this integrates so well. I agree with y'all, this is the right choice.
And just another piece, you all know, we did go back, this, the first quote was about a hundred and uh. I actually wrote it down somewhere. A hundred and seven thousand dollars more, they reduced the uh annual maintenance from one sixty one to one twenty eight. And chief, wasn't the original upfront like seven ten or seven no eight or something? So they did come in to, they worked with us, obviously, they wanna keep us, they wanna get us as a client, keep us as a client. End of, you know, the year, obviously, they could, they did like a thirty percent uh discount, so uh they did work with us. They also allowed us to set a five year um maintenance that we talked about, because y'all know, once you. Get in software, they can bump it up four, five, six percent a year, and that was one of the things that, would you be willing? To lock us in on a three percent for five years, and they said, yes, they will. So that could be an additional savings for us if if we did choose to though.
Great, any other uh questions uh from council?
Yeah, yeah, Chief, oh, go ahead, Greg.
Um. The, you know, it it was a sticker shock, and I, my preference would have been to address this during the budget. Um, it was, it's very close to the budget, so the the timing on this is a little. A little awkward, um i- in terms of net impact to the budget. Uh you know, it's coming out of the the replacement funds and we have a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollar. Annual recurring cost, what are we currently paying for Crimes?
Sixteen thousand dollars.
Sixteen, so the net impact is going to be a hundred and seventeen. Hundred and eighty per year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That piece also, um they're gonna, this, we're the first one, they're basically supporting this whole thing, our IT. They won't have to support this. Uh New World is gonna be basically a IT supporter, they're gonna do all the upgrades, they're gonna host everything in the cloud. So when you look at that hundred and twelve thousand, um there is some IT in there. It actually, I think it was fifty thousand, they dropped it to twenty five thousand, but yes, sir, that would be a hundred and twelve thousand. Uh you know, uh more than we're paying currently, but they maintain it for us.
Right. Um, i- in terms of Tyler. Um, how, and it might be in there, I didn't read all of it, how long have they been around? Um, how comfortable or how comfortable are we that? That they're going to be around five years from now, just to, you know, the the integrity of the company, what what are your thoughts on that?
Well, Tyler uh purchased New World, who was around for, they were out of Detroit, they, like I said, they, when I went over to Rockwall. They had already been a client for eleven years, so they've been with them over twenty. Uh they purchased a Tyler Technology, which has been around, if anybody knows how long, uh. Yeah, I I, you know, they acquired the company, I'm sure they've been around quite a while also because they purchased. Uh New World, because they also have Odyssey, which is a product that the DA's office used in Rockwall. Uh they, all these other different uh modules that they have, so I'm, I wanna say they've been around for twenty plus years also. And they just went ahead and purchased New World, who'd been around for, like I said, at least twenty years.
Tyler Technology's been around a long time.
Yeah, since nineteen seventy, and I believe the city's had a relationship with them since two thousand and one.
Good.
Yeah.
They're publicly traded. The S and P five hundred.
Yeah, so it 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 looks like this is, we're moving from Crimes, which is hosted, I'm assuming, is it hosted on a server? And the Greg Holden Memorial Server Room?
That's right, that's the thermostat.
Thermostat.
If Crimes is anything like it used to be, it's a little scary on how it's set up and how very insecure it is.
Oh, trust me, I. I, my job is going into places that have not upgraded in a very long time and 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 sticker shock is part of, is part of it, but it's. There will be some savings if this is anything like, like the field that I am in, when there's some upfront costs, of course. Uh the recurring, you may see savings that drop that recurring. Uh down by having our IT department not having to replace the server by uh, you know, when there's downtime, when there's an upgrade, not having to. Uh s- send Andy and and Bob to uh to do those, those upgrades, so there, there's definitely some efficiency savings there. It also sounds like, and I may regret this getting, if I get pulled over in the future, but it sounds like. Um, the ticket writing uh may be more efficient.
Very efficient, yes, sir, and just so you'll know, since you're in 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 this field. There will not be a server and that's a saving on the hardware side, all of it's hosted in the cloud.
Right, right, so there's, there are savings there, um but yeah, i- it's one of those things where where if you have an in-house IT department, it's nice to. To have those folks do all your upgrading and all, but then when something happens, it's also incumbent upon them to get in touch with the crime support people. And so you're tying up a lot of city resources when something, something happens, um it is nice to just have one entity. Uh, uh to call, um so, uh you know. We talk about priorities in the city and and by far uh safety, um. Safety and and crime reduction is a huge, huge, if not the first priority for all of us, uh public safety. And so, yeah, there is a sticker shock here, the the, but I think it's. Based on all the products that you gentlemen, uh James and and Chief uh Chief Bits and and Chief Riggs, you guys have. Experienced with with your other other departments. And based on um the recurring costs of about a hundred and hundred and eightish thousand dollars a year. Uh, I think that this is definitely worth it to our citizens, uh it does, you know, hearing what, hearing what we currently have. Made me feel a little bit unsafe at the current moment, um and and having something more efficient for for our officers and for our volunteers. And for our firefighters to, and dispatch, um. To, to manage resources more effectively, to to prosecute more effectively. I think this is worth it, um that was my comments, I don't know if anyone else has a, wants to chime in on anything?
Yeah, Andrew, I'm gonna, oh, go ahead, I'll get.
Uh, go ahead, I'll let, I'll let Drew have the, have the last word.
Well, I would like to speak too, Andrew.
Yeah, of course.
I'm gonna go after you, Gary.
Yeah, I'm I'm giving, I'm clearing the way for you, sir.
Okay, um, Austin, is, could any of this be paid for out of CCP di- district money? We've got a four million dollar balance in there. We've got a four million dollar balance in there?
We, we couldn't. I know, uh, that the plan for some of the ongoing costs would be to look to take it out of there in, in future years. But the bulk of the one-time cost would come out of the, uh, capital replacement fund, which we've already set aside the money for, for, for. An upgrade of the system.
Okay, well, without going back into another budget session, uh, have you looked at plugging this into your spreadsheet? And seen what the effect is on our ninety-day reserve?
So it, would it impact our, our ninety-day reserve for the general fund this year? Because it's coming out of the, um, capital replacement fund.
So it's, it's kind of, it's already been set aside for a future upgrade to occur and. But so this is, this is that impact.
Right. So it would be out of Fund Seven, not Fund One, which is the general fund.
Right. And that's a great question, Gary, about it coming out, the, the future costs coming out of the CCPD funds.
You lost me when you got into fund accounting. I failed that class.
That's all right. No, it's a good, good question and good point that, that the CCPD fund is, is really, really helpful to, uh. To all of our bottom line, but also keeps us safer by being able to implement a product like this and replacing an older, less efficient product.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, uh. Having a adverse impact on our reserve.
Sure.
Yeah.
Drew?
Hey, I, I just wanted to follow up, uh, with James. I wanted to second that it would. Have made me feel maybe better if, if we had more, uh. A few more quotes and investigated that further, but I think, uh, without formally doing it, we've already done that. Know the basic price points of the other software and, and the integration points and, uh, you know, sometimes intangibly. Uh, it works better. Uh, if you, you know, you just know that inco, you know, Tyler Technologies were already doing business with them. And it's just better in that way. The other, other point I wanted to, um, come to is the. You know, we're stepping up the, the annual spend, uh, from one-twenty, from sixteen to one-twenty-eight. But everything that, that has been saying, the integration costs, the, the time savings for, for courts, for police, for. For fire, for dispatch, and then the up, up level of safety, that the, the uptick in safety that we're getting out of this. I, I think that tangibly and intangibly pays for itself or comes pretty darn close. So, uh. I, I have no, no major qualms with, with this.
Thank you, Drew. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, Chief, just a real quick, I know we've talked a lot about, uh, Chief Riggs, I guess I should clarify. We've, we've talked a lot about how, uh, it's gonna definitely help your officers in terms of data collection and, and making sure that, uh. That they can streamline all of their workflow. Uh, in terms of citizens, uh, because, and I mentioned this just because I think even today. Uh, on social media, there were citizens expressing concern about keeping tabs on what was happening in their community and knowing, you know, if there were. Uh, incidents and becoming more proactive and, you know, kind of staying on guard and, and using. Information about crime in the community to, to be able to continue to, to, uh, to, to stay vigilant. Um, can you tell us how this might be able to change? Uh, you've talked briefly about being able to provide better data. But are we, is this also going to allow us to do some of the things that maybe other cities have been doing for a while now in terms of like a crime heat map? Or other tools that will allow citizens to better understand kind of what's going on in, in the city?
Y- yes, sir. That's a great question. And yes, we will be able to do that. Currently, we do that, uh, on, on our website. Um, with the software, but this one's, like I said, it's more robust, it's more new technology. So we will be able to say, okay, in this area, we've had, uh, this many burglar motor vehicles. And show those different heat hotspots. And also we can direct our patrol there. Uh, like currently, we're having some issues, as y'all know, time of the year seventeen-four. We have, uh, two officers that we. Uh, decided to pay overtime to flood that area to show high visibility. So yes, sir, we will be able to do that. Uh, be able to put out a lot more different reports and be able to get everybody data quicker and more accurate data.
Great, thank you.
Outstanding.
I guess Chief Bits, you also, not that we're, you know, nickel and diamond it, but he has two, three, four thousand dollars. I think he spends a year also for his software that, that, that will be going away. And, uh, but appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief Bits, does this replace Firehouse?
Yes, it would.
Awesome. Yeah, there's a, there's untold number of benefits in. Efficiency here, like Chief Riggs mentioned, master name database. That, that is a real technical term, but you make contact with somebody on a traffic stop. And then someone does an incident report. The way it is now, it doesn't tie those together. There's no way to identify and link a person to multiple incidents or interactions with the police or the fire department, whereas now you would have a master. Database for people and everything ties together much easier. So when you're an investigator, it makes it much easier to. Find patterns, find connections and put your pieces together when you're trying to investigate a crime. And so it's gonna make. Our detectives much more efficient at their jobs and empower patrol officers when they're on a stop to know. Oh, we've dealt with this guy like thirty-two times and fourteen of those, we got him for crack. I may not recognize him because I didn't stop him every week, but now he's on, he's on the streets at a different hour. So you have a different shift that's working with them. But the computer tells him, hey, they just been jacking with this guy for years. And that doesn't happen right now. So, but just the untold benefits to improving our system. And while it's sticker shock, we should have done this years ago.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe Harris County, uh, Sheriff's Department uses Tyler Technologies.
Yep. For what?
For their reporting software.
No, we're on, um, uh, Superior on Central Square. And, uh, they're in the middle of trying to decide what they're gonna do. Uh, we're. I would love to see us go to Central Square's new product is all web-based, similar to this one. But they.
They told us they were with Harris County.
Is it Harris County or was it HPD?
Yeah, it was a long.
I know that, and it may have been WatchGuard, uh, you know, we, we've gone with two different huge software companies here lately, but, uh.
HPD uses WatchGuard.
Yes, 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 yes. Maybe it's just, but, and just one of the things that I, I do want to clarify a little bit on the turnkey piece. IT, when they do do an upgrade, it has to go to every unit, like the desktops and the in-car. They would have to go in. And download that off the internet, but that would be it. They just, there's not, that would be their, their piece. So there is a piece that, yes, our IT will be involved, but it will give them more time to do other things.
One other quick question. Does, does this new system in any way tie in to, uh, the camera, the, the. The OCR system for the cameras?
On the flock?
Flock cameras, yeah.
Uh, I would have to ask that question to them. I, I don't know that, sir. I'd have to get that. Uh, I'd have to ask them that.
Okay. I, I just, obviously, as James mentioned, the master names, records, you know, obviously, if you know to. You obviously can input it manually, say, you know, let us know if this particular plate shows up, but I wasn't sure if there was some additional. You know, kind of cross-referencing that could happen.
I don't know if anybody's utilizing that at this time, but I can talk with Flock and, and find out. How we could utilize it and also talk to Eric, our, our rep with, uh, New World, our Tyler.
All right. Great chat, great, um, great information. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, uh, for a motion on, uh. Resolution number twenty-twenty-sixty-six.
I'll move, we approve resolution number twenty-twenty-sixty-six.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. That was Gary Wobenhorst with the motion and James Singleton with the second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Move on to, uh, item seven, consider ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-two. Uh, this looks like it's just the, uh, budgetary component of what we just, uh, just adopted. Um, any, any questions about this, uh, this ordinance? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
I'll move, we approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-three-two.
Second.
Okay, Bobby with second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. So move on to, uh, item eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding City of Jersey Village sales tax allocation. Austin Blyce.
Mayor and Councilors, last month, we talked about our sales tax allocation and the council asked us to, uh, have the staff look at some future funding needs for the police and. Fire department so they could have a better understanding of how that potentially could be utilized. Just a reminder that the half percent sales tax is about one, about just under two million dollars from what we collected last year. So councils should also keep in mind that any change from the property tax, sales tax relief to the fire one, um, or anything else would end up in. In a result, or would result in a loss of funding to the general fund. Assuming a fire sales tax, uh, were approved by the voters, we would need to allocate nearly all of the sales tax collected for the first year. Um, the fire department expenses, then that would be transferred back to the general fund, just as the CCPD fund works right now. So we put all the information together that council asked for. We've got the memos in here from the fire department, along with a potential, or, or a CIP that we're potentially looking at. And then the police chief also put in a memo with a few things that are kind of out there on the horizon. These are things that are not, you know, set in stone, are going to happen or going to be requested. They still need to go through the budgeting process, um, as, as well. Uh, but it's just kind of that, you know, outlook as to what, what we might need in the future. So. The other piece of this is the four, the four chapter three agreements that we have out there. Uh, two of them have not had any payments paid on them yet. Those ones should be easy enough to renegotiate if we have to do that. The other two, we would need to find a way to either renegotiate or, um, subs, uh, come up with the money there. Um, we've talked a little bit with the, uh, city attorney on that. Uh, feel we could come up with a few solutions if, if council decided to modify this. Or decided to put it out to the voters to modify the sales. So, um, we've got the information and happy to answer any questions might have.
Just gonna refresh our memories on this. Um, we're talking about just reallocation of the property tax relief portion?
Correct, the half, half percent property tax.
Okay. Did we determine the impact on the property owners? When we reallocate from that?
Yes, so the property tax, the impact for the property tax owners on that, um, is. It's up to the council how they set that, uh, property tax rate and pulling up the information. But it, it really comes down to what the council sets the property tax rate at. While the no new revenue, um, rate would change potentially, the council has historically, up until this past year, kept the rate the same. So it, it really, the impact to the property taxpayers is set on a annual basis in September. When the council sets the property tax.
So basically. I'm, because of the way that it sounds with that name, it seems like we're going to have to change the rate. To keep the property owners paying the same amount.
That's, no. That's a little difficult because every, i- it's a moving target every single year.
Yeah, I understand that. Uh, it's just that there's a half percent there. Two million dollars. That looks like it's. Providing relief to the property owners at this point, but it won't be there in the future.
And that's why I, I pointed out that for the first year, we would want to look at allocating. Everything that we would take into the fire department expenses, which would get transferred back into the general fund. So the first year would be, you would see that coming into the general fund as revenue being transferred in from the fire department. Sales tax district, similar to how you see the revenue being transferred into the general fund from the CCPD.
And, and just real quick, I realize there's probably some people watching on YouTube, uh, totally enthralled with our conversation. I just want to. Quickly go over what we're talking about here. In Jersey Village, or really any, any city. Um, two percent of the sales tax, uh, that, that is allowed to go back to the city. Um, is currently it's split one percent going into the general fund and, and last year, that was about three point nine million dollars. Um, there is a property tax relief fund that is point five percent, which is, uh, like, like Austin mentioned, just under two million dollars a year. And then there's the Crime Control Prevention District, which is also at a half percent and therefore just under two million dollars. The citizens of Jersey Village have voted repeatedly to create and, uh, re- reauthorize the Crime Control Prevention District. Which means that every dollar that you spend in, in Jersey Village, a half a cent goes into that fund. Um, a Crime Control Prevention District Fund, in a nutshell, of course, there's a lot of rules, but essentially that fund is used by the police department. To fund anything from, uh, equipment to personnel. Um, there's several, uh, officer salaries, uh. That are, that come from that fund. Um, new, uh, uh. Bulletproof vests, new weapons, weapons training. There, there's a lot of things that, that, um, that go into. That fund. And what we're talking about here is this property tax relief fund. That the city, your sales tax currently, a half cent, every, every dollar you spend goes into that fund. And that just is basically, it goes into the general fund. It's really just there to, uh, in name, almost a name only. Offset property tax, um, property taxes for the citizens. Um, we're looking at taking that. Because that fund also contributes to the no, uh, no net, um. My, my brain just crapped on me, but no, no net, no new net revenue font, uh, a rate. Um, that the Texas Legislature has, has imposed on cities. Um, year over year, the city is not allowed to increase that, that rate. Um, and so what we're looking at doing is taking that fund as something that's handcuffing us at the moment. Um, and using it towards something that, that I think we all feel is very important, as we just talked about in the last agenda items, which was. Fire safety, uh, fire department EMS, that, that's a fund that we're looking at creating. Just like the Crime Control Prevention District Fund, so creating something that, we already have something for the police department. And e- as equally important is the fire and EMS services in our city. And we're looking at the fact that we're adding on new firefighter salaries. We're looking at, uh, if, if you went through your package and you looked at. That the ten-year, uh, CIP for the fire department, we're looking at over two million dollars worth of, worth of items. Um, that are just mentioned, uh, as something on the horizon over the next ten years. So this would be a fund that we would take the property tax relief. Half, half percent and put it in, instead, or potentially, we're just talking about this, uh, put that into a, a fire. A fire, um, this is a, a CCPD for, for the fire department. Um, and what we're talking about today is, should we allocate, number one, should we do it? Number two, uh, should, should we allocate the, uh, the half percent, uh, fully to that? There's other options, as the state allows us to break down that half, uh, cent, uh, percentage, all, all the way down to one-eighth of a percent. So if it's not something that we want to commit a, a whole half cent to, we can, we can change that. Above all of this is that it does, this is not something that, um, we decide as city council, this will ultimately go to the voters, uh, in May. So this is something that we're looking at, um, and we had a discussion last meeting, if you want to look at that YouTube video, you can look at our, our discussions before that. And essentially, if I recall from that discussion, we looked at, um, creating this half cent, half, half a percent. Fund for the fire department, because we feel like they're equally, uh, as important as JBD. Um, and they provide that value to us as citizens, uh, value of, of safety. And, um. We, we wanna, we wanna commit those funds potentially towards that. Ultimately, of course, it's down to the citizens to decide. Um, so I just wanted to go over, anybody watching and wondering what the heck we're talking about, that's kind of what we're talking about. There's, there's two percent that we're allowed to use. Every dollar you spend in Jersey Village, that eight point two-five percent sales tax, two, two cents of that goes to the city. One, right now, one cent goes to the general fund, a half cent goes to this, uh, property tax relief fund. And a half cent right now goes to Crime Control Prevention, Crime, Crime Control Prevention District. And we're looking at changing the property tax relief half cent to something different.
But, if I, if I can, um, Councilor Ruben Horst, to answer your question, the, uh, no new revenue rate. Um, without this, without the property tax relief, would have been a point seven-four-five-three. Um, this current year, uh, we approved the voter, or we, the council approved the voter approval rate, or set the tax rate at the voter approval rate this year. Which was point seven-two-three-four. Without the, without the half cent there, it would have been 0.7714. So it's all right in that same ballpark of where the voter or where the tax rate has been for 15 years or longer.
Okay, and since it's set every single year. The tax rate is set every year. It's difficult to say that this would impact it because if property values increase next year by 5%, we are capped at 3% anyways. As far as that increase goes, we're also, as this council has has done in the past, recent, recently, we've lowered the tax rate. We've also increased the exemptions for the citizens. And I know a few of you have verbally committed to increasing the exemptions again next year. So there's a lot of leverage we can pull for the citizens to make sure that their property tax bills are staying at a reasonable rate, whether that's tax rate or exemptions. But I think that what, what reallocating that property tax relief half, half a percent would do is give the council that's voted in by the people more room to do what we need to do with the current, with the upcoming comprehensive plan, paying down debt. There's a lot of things that we can move that towards that that, that fund does not allow us to really touch.
Yeah, and I understand that we're looking at different options on how to allocate it and not all of it would go to a what is it, FCP EMSD?
It's definitely not a, it's definitely not as easy to say a CCPD. I've been looking at, I've been trying to learn it.
It's a lot of letters.
FCP, FCP EMSD.
What is that, Fire Control Prevention and EMS District? Okay, I guessed correctly.
Got to work on that acronym. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I think there needs to be some, a little bit of accounting work done here as to determine what would be the right amount to allocate to a FCP EMS district. I mean, we've, we got $4 million in, as a balance in the CCP district. I'm not sure that's a really great management of the city's money. I mean, it's, that's $4 million just sitting there. I don't, I don't really want to see another district come along that's going to be hoarding money that the city could be using for other purposes. So I think a little research needs to be done there and then determine where we would like to move the rest of it.
And to your point, there's, there's other complications as there, as was mentioned, there's a couple of chapter three eight agreements we would have to renegotiate. Because Austin, refresh my memory, but with the, the two chapter, chapter threes we're currently paying, that are actually paying that they, they're only being refunded the 1.5%, right? They're not being refunded that that half cent from crime control prevention. And so we would have to figure out if we did create the poorly named FCP EMSD, if we would basically if we would renegotiate and then only refund the one, the 1% back to, to those beneficiaries of the chapter three eighty agreement.
Right, the, the other option that the city would have is you could continue with a one and a half percent, but it would all come from the, you know, the 1% sales tax that we we bring in.
Right.
And the other, you know, the other option that we have is to increase just the general revenue sales tax. We can move that to one and a half percent. And while we might need to reword the agreements, it's essentially would stay the same. So the, the redoing the three eighty agreements in that scenario would not be difficult, I don't believe.
Well, any other questions or comments from council?
I would just say, I, I, if I may, I think that the, I think partially the reason why the CCPD fund is as large as it is was more about maybe an overly cautious approach to the, to that fund's balance previously. I think we've shown this year, we were able to make pretty full utilization of it. In fact, I think we actually spent more out of it than we projected to take in. Or somewhere pretty close to that.
Pretty close.
Yeah, so I think we have, at least, I, I don't think we should necessarily look at the pattern with the crime control and prevention district fund and assume that that same pattern would continue in the future, either with the crime control prevention or this emergency services fund. Just looking at the budget for the fire department. There is, you know, last year's budget was just shy of $2 million. This year's budget is just over $2 million. So at least based on the numbers we're looking at, if we're asking whether or not this is too large or too large of a fund potentially for the fire department, right now it's almost a perfect fit. You would be able to almost completely fund the fire department based on our current levels. The concern really arises more when you're talking about future growth. You know, when Village Center takes off and it's, and it's generating revenue, is it going to then create a ballooning situation? Maybe, but I think also a lot of our needs are going to increase in terms of fire and even police. So that would be a great problem to have, but I don't know that we necessarily need to go tinkering too much with the percentages. I think the bait, the usage now fits in perfectly with, with, with what would, you know, if we had two funds that were fire and police or emergency services and police that were equal. And it shows a commitment to both, which certainly council has had forever in terms of just our own commitment, but I think this, this solidifies that.
I agree. And, and that's a really great point because Greg and I are the elder statesmen here on council. We, we've, we had, you recall, we had the red light camera fund for a long time that paid for a lot of the part, I'm sorry, a lot of the police department salaries that that has ceased to be, it is no more. And so that's, that's a kind of a, a good chunk of that would have come out of CCPD and is now on CCPD. Those salaries were moved over the last several years. And so now we're starting to eat into that. It's actually four point, almost 4.8 million. But as Bobby mentioned, i- if you're looking at committing funds to a department that would be equal to what happens to be about 2 million, the fire department is it. And again, to the point that you're making as well as, is this, this, these numbers grow or shrink based on our sales tax revenue? So if Village Center opens and is a great success and like we hope it is, like I know it'll be, and we generate a lot of sales tax revenue, the needs over there will basically pay for, just like it's going to be paying for with the CCPD, it will be help being paid for with the fire department. So it, it's one of those things where the citizens are committing to it, council's committing to it. It's tied to, it's tied to a revenue stream that, that goes up and down based on the, how busy the city is, if you will, how busy our economy is, how many, how much services we actually need. And then it's, it's something that that goes before the citizens for, for approval. And it's something that council, you know, it, it, it eventually ends back up in the general fund at some point, but but it's, it's only flagged for those expenses. So it does help us as a city free up and give the people who vote us into office more discretion with our, with our general fund. Year, year, year over year especially. Greg, I know you're trying to.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple of things. One, you know, we talk about renegotiating the three eighty, chapter three eighty agreements. I don't think we need to go down that road. I, I think we made a commitment on an agreement. We need to stick to it. In terms of Village Center, I think most of the sales tax have been, has already been allocated over there. I think the numbers are set and, and also if I'm not mistaken, it's 10 or 20 years. We'd, we'd have to look at that. But if, in my opinion, if we're looking for a general concept, keeping in mind that whatever we would propose would need to be approved by the voters. I would probably be more in favor of retaining an eight. I'm sorry. Or retaining half into the property relief and putting half into the emergency services fund. I think that's a more palatable scenario for voters. You're still getting some, some type of tax relief and, and then in turn, we're still funding emergency services.
So you're saying that you would like to see, that you would like to see that half cent, the half percent that's currently going to the property tax relief go down to 0.25 and then create the emergency district, the, the fire emergency district at 0.25 as well?
Yes. I, I think, I think people would be more receptive to that.
Can you split it like that? Or do you have to do one eighth increments?
One eighth, you can do one eighth, one fourth, three eights, one half, five eights, three fours, seven eights, or 1%. So you can, you can absolutely do one, one fourth.
I think a scenario, a gradual scenario like that, one, it, I think it'd be more palatable. Two, it will accomplish what we're trying to accomplish in the short term. And then give us an opportunity to adjust it or a future council to adjust it in the future.
Right, it isn't set in stone.
I'm sorry?
Obviously, this, this isn't set, set in stone. It's definitely something that can change down the road. If, if you do the one, the 1% general revenue, 0.25% property tax relief, 0.25 to the FCP EMS, EMSD and half percent to crime control, that's not forever. That's something that we can see how this goes and, and tweak it, tweak it down the road. All this has to go before the voters, of course.
I, I do have one question, and Scott, this may be for you. Are we limited on the percentage of the sales tax that we can allocate to the general fund? I mean, can it be a?
No, you, you could have all, all the money go to the general fund.
Okay. Okay.
Which is certainly a more flexible and, and better option. But the public enjoys the fact that we set aside, hey, these funds are going to go to this specific use and there's nothing we can do about it, except on a very limited basis.
Right. And, and I think, deep right.
I, yeah, I think since it does have to go back to the voters, we do have a duty to make it, not waste everybody's time. So if we want to put this on the ballot, I think Greg's point of, of slowly getting into that district might be more palatable to voters. Because ultimately, if you do put all of it back into the general fund, yes, it will, it will just go right back to the fire department. Because at least this council and previous councils have always pretty much said yes to just about anything that's proposed in the, in the budget to, to make us safer. But this, this, I don't think you're losing anything by putting a quarter of a percent, which right now is a little, a little under $1 million a year towards that, that FCP EMSD. And then I, yeah, I, I, I think that's probably, does anybody have any comments on that? Is that, is that something you want to, it's bound upon? Bobby, I see you.
I, I, yeah, and I totally get what Greg's saying. I, I generally agree, but I think that, that sort of part of the motivation of even raising the subject to begin with was because of the artificial constraints in the calculation of the, the no, no new revenue tax rate. That that sort of created some problems, especially when it came to some of our economic development work. Obviously, Greg's proposal gets us a good deal of the way there in terms of easing that crunch and, and, you know, easing that restraint. But I, you know, I, I don't know, Austin, do do you foresee that the problem is alleviated if we kind of only go half the way on it and leave a quarter of a percent in the property tax relief?
Sort of mechanism. It, it still would, you know, impact our property tax rates, you know, in that whole calculation every year. It obviously lowers the, the impact, but there still is an impact on, on that rate. It, it's, it's a property tax reduction in, in name, you know, if, if we were to put that all into just the general revenue, it would still have the same net effect because it's bringing in the same number of dollars into the general fund, which means we still need that same number of dollars that we collect today in, in property taxes. So the, the rate really wouldn't change all that much. So it's, it's a, it's all in a name, I guess, and however we want to divvy it out.
I, I don't have, you know, I don't have a problem doing it anyway. I, I like the concept. I like what we're trying to do, but it's not up to us. And I don't think you're going to sell a property red, a property tax reduction to a general fund revenue. I'm not going to give.
Oh, no, I agree.
X.
Yeah, no. I don't, I don't think you proposed that.
No, it's just, it, it. It's, it's how.
That's why. Oh, go ahead.
No, that's, that's it. I just.
And, and that's why I suggested that we do, I, I think that voters would support moving that fund if it all went to emergency services. I think that's an easy sell. I think any part of that going to the general fund, it becomes much more perilous. So that's why, I mean, I think the numbers line up. I think that, that that makes it, I mean, at that point, literally, you're just going to the voters and saying, do you support creating a dedicated fund for our fire department that is exactly the same as what we offer to our police department?
Right.
Easy enough.
How would that be worded on a ballot? How would that be worded for a voter to vote on it?
Very carefully.
I believe that one. The, the comptroller has a set wording and it's just going to be to approve one and a half cent tax, sales tax for that, that use. But the, the, the state statute sets out the wording on the ballot opposition.
So basically what you're saying is the, the voter's going to have an option of moving money from a property tax relief fund to a FCP EMSD fund. And I got a feeling that the interpretation by the voter is going to go a certain way and it's not going to be the way we're thinking.
Does, does the ballot item mention the dissolution of the property tax relief component?
I'll have to pull up the ballot language.
Because if it's not even mentioned, then.
I think Justin's trying to chime in too, because it, what Scott just said, it doesn't include that.
No, I, I don't know. So I, Justin, do you know what the ballot language would be, the exact?
For, for, not off the top of my head, but, but, but the idea would be that you'd have two, I think the, the cleanest way you have two ballot issues there. One would close off that property tax relief fund that you have now. And then the second would be to open the new, the new kind of district fund.
But I think the way the ballot language works is, is the voter doesn't have an option of cutting one off. It is, goes from, it goes, their only option is to transfer. And so that's why you have to look at the ballot language.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't have the ballot language in front of me.
Yeah, it would be kind of weird if we had two different, because what if one of them passed and one of them didn't and then?
It, it would all be one ballot. I know, I remember reading that in the TML literature that they put out. It's all one ballot question to swap it. So if it gets voted down, then everything stays the same as it is today.
Right, I think the ballot language will show both of them. It, it's, but it's clearly a swap and the only option is a swap. You don't lose your sales tax as an option. That's, that's a separate proposition.
Well, you couldn't, couldn't have the dissolution fail to pass and the other one pass because then you'd have two and a half percent worth of sales tax. Which is too much.
Right. That's what I was saying. It's got, it sounds like it's got to be one. So I was just wondering if it does even mention what, which fund is closing and which one is opening or?
Because you have to designate where, where it's coming from. It, but I, I, I think it has to designate what you're, where it's coming from. Because the other, it, it has to know which sales tax fund that you're moving that to. Like if you had an economic development, uh, sales tax, it would have to be clear which, whether it came from that or from the police or from the general to the new fund. So that's all in one ballot proposition.
Yes, this is Justin here. So that's what I was trying to say is that you, you're, depending on the language, the control and provide, you have that specific indication of what's, you know, what, what the fund was and then what it's proposed to be so that you'd have, with that one action, you'd have the one shut down and what new one opened. But really, at the end of the day, it's going to be, I mean, it's, it's going to be city job to, I mean, to put public notice out there and PR this thing so everyone knows exactly what they're doing with that one action. So there's not confusion at the ballot when it comes that they, when people come, they're, they're in knowledge of, of what that one action's going to be.
Is this? Is this? Now, the C, the CCPD fund is something that is re, the district is reauthorized every certain period of time. Is this FCP EMSD something that would also have to be authorized at the same time? Or does that ballot item pass and then we create the district or?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, the only thing we've looked at so far is the initiation of the, of the district.
Okay. Now, where this jacket, I come up with tough, tough questions, just like, just like Greg. Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, James.
I, I looked through the memos and the 10-year plans and liked them. As funny as I just mentioned, commercial vehicle enforcement, my kid the other day, said that'd be a neat thing to start up. If we did swing the full half percent to the FCP EMSD, looking at cost of firefighters plus the C I P that's proposed, we only hit like eight hundred thousand out of, and I know with CCPD, it's supposed to be supplemental. Are we going to come close to the nearly two million in yearly expenses on that? Or are we going to end up with extra money if we move the full half percent? And I think that's, Austin, what's your, your gut on that?
So I, you know, we've got salaries, wages, you know, all that, that's, you know, one point three-ish. You've got all your interfund activity, which is your fire trucks and equipment and everything else. That's five and a quarter million or five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you're sitting at one point, one million eight hundred and fifty thousand out of the, you know, just under two, so you're, you're pretty close.
Okay.
Uh, piggyback on that, so we could take monies from those funds and out, could we allocate those towards capital projects as well?
Absolutely, anything for the fire department would be capital.
Okay.
This is what we just did with Tyler Technologies.
Right, right.
Yeah, and then, you know, could pay for software and things like that too, so.
So we're not taking official action tonight, but we do need to give staff some direction towards what we would like to see so that we can get this on the ballot. I think in, in listening to everybody speak, all of the council members speak, I think everyone is most, most agreeable upon that half a percent going towards the found, the founding of the FCP EMSD. It seems to be the most reasonable option to put before the voters. And it also helps solve a few problems that, that the current property tax relief fund places upon Austin when, when we're trying to move forward with economic development and, and having that, that tax rate set. And it is going to be up to us as leaders of the city who want to support this, who want the citizens to support, want the voters to support this, to explain what this means. And it reminds me a whole lot of the, of the, of the red light camera vote a few years ago. It was a lot of education. And, you know, ultimately that, that passed with, with great, great approval. But this is something that we're going to need to educate the public on. So is everyone just nodding your head, shaking your head, okay with city staff moving forward with all the, what the actions needed to bring forth a proposal to the citizens, to the voters for a half percent to reallocate the half, half percent property tax relief fund to a, a fire, in FCP EMSD? Yes, nod yes, shake your head no. Gary's going to be difficult, I knew it. All right.
Yeah, Gary's having a seizure, he's all.
Yeah, need to send the fire truck his way. All right, I think that, that's enough information for you, Austin, is that okay?
Yep, we're, we're good to go, we know what we need to do.
All right. Excellent discussion there, gentlemen. Uh, and that moves us into mayor and council comments. Before we, before we recess into executive session, we'll do the council comments first. And so I will start with Bobby Warren.
Well, I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please stay safe out there and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll make it through.
Drew?
Can't do much better follow-up than that. Happy, happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas and may, may have a great start to twenty twenty-one. And we'll, we'll be on the other side, no time.
Thanks, sir. Greg?
Uh, nothing.
All right, Gary?
Yeah, I have no comment, thank you.
James?
I'm going to echo the same, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody stay safe.
All right, I just want to say thank you to everybody for, especially Greg, for having just the best looking jacket. And Drew, Drew, you look sharp, James, that, that was a great touch with the see-through green, so. Scott, thank you for your, for your hat there and Bobby, you look cozy in your fake background. I want to wish all the citizens a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah. One of my favorite traditions every year is I get to go speak at the menorah lighting up at City Hall. And this year was special because it's my last one. And Rabbi Levi, he, he had some, you know, story of Hanukkah is, is about perseverance. It's about beating the odds, it's about finding light in darkness. And it was, it was a wonderful time to spend with everybody. And it was, it was wonderful to hear the message that this is, you know, this is a dark time, but everyone needs to be the light in the darkness, everyone be kind to one another. Everybody look out for your neighbors and Jersey Village by far is the shining light, in my opinion, in this area. And all of our city staff, all of our volunteer firefighters, all of our police, police officers, everybody here who volunteers, everyone who sits on a board, everyone who contributes their time to a survey. You guys are the light in our city and I want to just say thank you to that. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and everybody stay safe. And with that, we will recess the regular session and move into executive session. Let me pull up my script here. Bear with me. There we go. All right. Where am I going? Okay, here we go. Lori, I closed the wrong window, hang on. Not my script for when we get in there. Oh, there we go. All right, city council is now going to retire to the closed session at nine oh one P M pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, section, in connection with the following items. Pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dash zero, that dot zero seven two deliberations regarding real property regarding the potential purchase of land reserved detention B, Jersey Village Country Club Estates, section four, second amendment R slash P, number two pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dash zero seven one, consult with the attorney regarding pending lawsuit, Jersey Village, Jersey Village Lodging LLC versus City of Jersey Village, cause number two zero one nine dash four zero five nine three, eleventh judicial district, Harris County, Texas. Pursuant with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dash yours, dot zero seven one, consult with the city attorney regarding the Comcast franchise fee dispute. And number four pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot zero seven four, deliberate the appointment of election judges for the City of Jersey Village. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberates, deliberations are concluded. So all of us will log out and hop onto the other Zoom meeting.
It's awfully official, so I figured I'd say something.
All right, let's see, the closed session was adjourned at nine forty-six P M and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. So moving to item K one, discuss and take appropriate action on matter discussed in executive session regarding the pending lawsuit, Jersey Village Lodging LLC versus City, City of Jersey Village, cause number twenty nineteen dash four zero five nine three, eleventh judicial circuit, oh, I'm sorry, eleventh judicial district, Harris County, Texas. Looking for a, let's see, looking for, I guess, we're looking for a motion to allow the city attorney to, to, or city secretary, city manager to accept the settlement agreement. I'm sorry, the.
Now, for that, for that item, it would be to approve the city attorney entering into a joint non-suit.
There, it's written in here.
Yeah.
So I move to authorize the city attorney to take necessary steps in the city's behalf to affect the agreed motion for non-suit without prejudice in the lawsuit, Jersey Village Lodging LLC versus City of Jersey Village, cause number twenty nineteen dash four zero five nine three in the eleventh district. You just, judicial district court of Harris County.
Second. Thank you, James, that's why they pay you the big bucks. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the topic?
Uh, yes, there's also an agenda, there is an ordinance at page four twenty-five of the agenda packet, I think.
Yes, the next agenda item.
That is the next item.
All right.
Yeah.
Who was the second, was that?
Gary.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Move on to item two, consider ordinance number twenty twenty S thirty-three, finding that the structures at sixteen eight eighty-four Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, seven seven oh four oh. Uh, the property have been repaired to the extent the property is not substandard and making other findings and provisions related thereto. Looking for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash three three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
Was that council member Singleton on the second?
Yes. And item number three, discusses take appropriate action regarding the matter discussed in executive session concerning a settlement agreement with Comcast regarding franchise fees.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement with Comcast regarding franchise fees.
Second.
Second.
I'm going to give this one to Gary. I have a motion in the second, I'm, and any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? With that, we will adjourn, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. See you next time, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.